All right, so give me a call to order. Call speed order, we'll do a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Where's the flag?
Flag's coming. There it is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I consider a vote to enter into executive session under RGL section forty two, forty six, five A via roll call. Ollie says she's muted. Unmute yourself, Ollie. Ollie can't unmute herself. Rita can't, Ed can't, it looks like either.
Okay, I'm good now.
Ed Bowen.
Oh, that's muted too.
Muted, thank you, the host muted me, for good reason. I.
Rita Kenahan.
Hi.
Patrick McHugh.
Hi. We're in exec, we're in second session, so we'll see everybody over there. Think I do?
I don't think, Jan, I don't think Jan is at her computer.
Hello, Jana.
I don't think so. Wait.
Carolyn, freaking tyrant that she is. Oh, did she hear me talking?
Don't time it.
I can. I hear. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, I can.
I can hear you.
Yes?
Yes.
Great.
All right. You're gonna let the, let these people in, we'll start this meeting. Mariah's in. Hold on a minute, let's go. So, welcome, everyone. To the school committee meeting. Hope everyone can hear me okay. I would like to notify that no votes were taken in executive session. I consider a vote to seal the minutes of executive session via roll call.
Ollie Allen. Ed Bowen.
Hi.
Jana Porter.
Hi.
Rita Kenahan.
Hi.
Patrick McHugh.
Hi. Motion passes. I will accept the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I shall move.
Have a second.
Second, it's Rita.
Can I get a consent, can I get a vote via roll call for the consent agenda, please?
Ollie Allen.
Hi.
Ed Bowen.
Hi.
Jana Porter. Jana Porter.
Hi.
Rita Kenahan.
Hi.
Patrick McHugh.
Hi.
Excuse me, Patrick. On agenda, on agenda item three point three, did we have a motion or a second?
Yes, we had a motion and a second. I think it was Ollie Allen made the motion. Good? You okay with that, Mariah?
Sure, so Ollie Allen made the motion and who seconded that?
Rita.
I did.
Thank you very much.
All right. First thing first, if, if someone's gonna speak tonight, that's not a student, just state your, your name and your address, that's for the record for our, our clerk. Thank you. So I'd like to welcome all the student athletes in and congratulate them on winning the scholarships. We also have Ron Bogel here, who is gonna speak to the three winners of the Bogel scholarships. Ron, I'm gonna do the Anthony Raposo Scholarship first and the Doris Simmons. And then I'll let you speak before I announce the three winners for the Bogel family. Does that work okay for you, Ron?
That's great, can you hear me all right?
I can hear you good.
Okay, great.
Right. So if there's no objection, I'd like to move up eleven point one. Consider discuss and vote to award school committee scholarships via roll call. Is there any objections to that? Not seeing any. I will entertain a motion to award school committee scholarships via roll call.
I'll make that motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Via roll call now, please.
Ollie Allen. Ed Bowen.
Hi.
Jana Porter.
Hi.
Rita Kenahan.
Hi.
Patrick McHugh.
Hi. Motion passes, thank you. Okay, so our first winner, am I all set, everybody okay? So we can get Danny McCann, Danny McKennan off mute.
I'm here.
Hi, Dan. Congratulations on winning a scholarship.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you've won the Anthony Raposo Scholarship. The recipient should demonstrate good character and be recommended by the principal of their high schools. Three hundred and fifty dollars, Dan. So Dan is a four-year member and captain of the Portsmouth High Football Team. As mentioned in a letter received on his behalf, Danny sustained an injury, may have ended his senior year football season physically, but he was dedicated to the team as their captain for the whole season. The four-year member, captain of the Portsmouth High School Basketball Team, member of the track all through high school, volunteer at Special Olympics, the Potter League and his church, and plans to attend Bryant University and study business. GPA was three point seven. So Dan, you were recognized in this and really showed through was, was good character. And I think everyone that knows you knows what kind of character you have. And it was pretty easy to, to recommend you for the scholarship. And everything you've been through with your injury and, you know, with staying with the sports was really inspiring. And obviously, I've known you since you were five, so I can vouch for your good character too. So obviously, that good character came from somewhere, so it had to come from your mom and dad and your cousins and your uncles and aunts and, and your siblings. So congratulations, Dan, well deserved.
Thank you very much, thank you too, everybody, thank you.
Good, we got a virtual clap, is it a virtual clap?
Yay!
Thumbs up. Is Dan still here?
Yeah, I'm still here.
So Dan, good luck at Bryant University, we'll be watching you succeed. And don't forget us over here, Little Compton.
I won't, thank you, I appreciate everything.
All right, congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, our second recipient is Liliana Boishman. If we can put her up.
Hi.
Hey, Liliana. So Liliana, you won the Doris Simmons Memorial Education Scholarship. Doris Simmons is a lifelong resident of Little Compton and an educator and a member of the Little Compton School Committee. Recipient deserving of the scholarship, of the sole discretion of the school committee. So obviously, we couldn't let you slip through the cracks, you know, the committee knows how impressive you are and everything that you've done. And if anyone doesn't know, Liliana was a P, Portsmouth High School Counseling Department volunteer for four years, involved in many PHA clubs, several as a founder and/or treasurer, including Ski and Snowboard Club, Investment Club, Days for Girls Club, Debate Club and Christian Community Club. Member of the National Honor Society and, and an outstanding scholar. Participated in a mock trial in the Model United Nations, member of the lacrosse team, active volunteer at church, and hopes to attend a weekend college to study political science and business economics. It's a lot. And Liliana's GPA was four point three eight weighted, that's a lot of weight on a GPA there, Liliana. So Liliana, again, I've known you for your whole, most whole life, there since you were five, so impressive. You and your family and your siblings, and you're just gonna be an outstanding success, we all know that. So congratulations on winning the Doris Simmons Educational Scholarship Award, and good luck to you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
We gonna clap?
Yay! We're very proud of you. Thank you.
Congratulations. So our next three award winners are from the Bogel family. And Ron, if you'd like to take this moment before I announce the three to speak to them collectively, you can do that now if you'd like.
Yep, all right, thanks, I appreciate the opportunity. And I'm honored to represent my family, which includes my four sisters, and certainly are humbled to read the accomplishments and the leadership of these street students. I think the community and I'm sure the families are proud of each and every one of them. Your accomplishments are impressive and we look forward to hearing great things about you as you continue your education. No question, you'll make a difference out there. And be the leaders that you are in high school, be the leaders to show us the way and how to treat each, each other with dignity and respect. So congratulations to each, each of you, we're proud of you. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Ron. So Ron, now you get to hear about the three winners and see what they look like in virtual person right now. So this, this next award goes to Sierra Nicole Harmon. And hello, Sierra, how are you? This is the one, one, I, one winner that I haven't, I haven't met. So Ruth Combs Bogel Memorial Scholarship. Ruth Combs Bogel was a first grade teacher for twenty-five years and major contributor to Christian education at the United Congressional Church. This recipient, the recipient plans to pursue a degree in education. And as you know, Sierra, you know that you are gonna do that. And this is a five hundred dollar award. So Sierra Nicole Harmon plans to be an elementary school teacher and plans to study at URI or University of Maine. Sierra was a Wilbermann School tutoring chair through the National Honor Society, four-year member of the color guard and a co-captain for two years. Participated in Portsmouth High School Vocal Ensemble, Rhode Island All-State Choir, Desbyne Society and the PH Drama Club. Member of the National Honor Society. Found time to volunteer at her church and the choir and running sports camps. She also has a very heavy GPA at three point nine three. So Sierra, your resume really jumped out at, at the committee. And it looks like you're gonna, on your way to be quite a teacher some, someday in elementary school. So congratulations, have you decided where you're going?
I'm going to URI.
Congratulations, good for you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, congratulations. We got the claps, thumbs up? All right, I like the thumbs up, thank you. So our next recipient is for the Leslie Briggs Coombs Memorial Scholarship. And the next, and the scholar's one, this is Cormac Hayes, we have Cormac Hayes here. So Cormac, you have won the Leslie Briggs Coombs Memorial Scholarship. So Leslie Briggs Coombs taught at Harvard University and was the first president of Derpy Tech, now UMass Dartmouth. The recipient is an all-around good scholar and athlete. So it's quite evident, Cormac, that you are a all-around good scholar and definitely an athlete. And again, well-respected, you know, everybody knows how hard you work and, and the dedication you put into what you do. And we're all looking forward to seeing you do some great things over in, we're gonna go to, let me read it. You remember the National Honor Society received academic honors all four years of high school, remained an active scholar of classical piano from the age of five to fifteen, then continued to self-teach throughout high school. Active on the Portsmouth High School golf and hockey teams, as well as Little Compton Recreational Basketball League. Plans to attend Loyola University in Maryland to study finance and accounting. And he had another weighted GPA of three point nine two.
Thanks.
And I will say that you are the best three-point shooter in, in, in rec basketball, Cormac, I think we all know that.
Thanks, man.
So, so we look forward to seeing you in Loyola, Loyola University in Maryland and the great things you're gonna do. Does your brother go there too?
Yeah, he goes there.
He's there too. So, you know, you have a great legacy, you have a great parents, a great family, and a very well-respected student you are. So congratulations, Cormac.
Thanks, thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the last, the last winner and recipient is for the James Wester Coombes Scholarship, that's Joseph Gallagher. So the James Wester Coombes, Little Compton, was a Little Compton School Superintendent. Recipient demonstrates leadership characteristics and school community support, as well as scholastic achievements. So Joe Gallagher gets a thousand dollars scholarship. So Joe is a four-year member and captain of the Portsmouth High School Basketball Team, participated on the high school sailing team, member of the investment club, church lecturer for four years and volunteer at my brother's keeper, outstanding scholastic achievement and a member of the National Honor Society. Plans to attend Holy, attend Holy Cross and study mechanical engineering. And his weighted GPA was the heaviest, probably at Portsmouth High School, at four point four oh. Is that the top, is that the top, Joe?
I have no idea.
Yeah. That's pretty good. So Joe, what, what jumped out at everyone was obviously your leadership and your dedication to community, as well as your scholastic achievements. So Joe, I can speak for, for myself, what a wonderful young man you've become and what a great future you have. And again, you come from another wonderful family with wonderful brothers and sisters and parents that made you who you are. So you make everybody proud. So good luck at Holy Cross and congratulations, Joe.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, folks, thanks to the winners. Thanks for coming to this virtual meeting.
Thanks.
Great job, good luck in your future endeavors, we will be watching you, whoop, whoop. And Sierra, thank you for helping out in the library after school.
If you haven't, send either me or Mrs. DeFur your picture, if you haven't already.
Thank you, yes, can you send the, your senior picture to Mariah or Carolyn Sedgwick? Because they're gonna put the, the winners in the newspaper to celebrate you guys.
Thanks.
All right, thank, thank you, guys.
We're all very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Job well done.
All right, Pat, I'm gonna check out.
Thanks, Ron.
You bet.
Thank you. Bye-bye, Mr. Bogel.
Yep, bye, glad to be invited.
Thank you.
I gotta say, that's my favorite thing all year.
It's always warm, too, like hot out. All right, so back to the grind. So spotlight on, spotlight excellence. Sonya Whip, five point one. Sonya with us?
Yeah, I can, I can jump in there, I think she's having some difficulty with her connection. So, and John Gabriel, I think will be taking over a bit as well here. Sonya, okay. Yes, I, I believe that John will be the best person to speak to the wifi access. But the distance learning, I'm very proud of how hard everybody's worked. The staff really came through and learned a lot of new things in order to be able to deliver instruction virtually. We did a lot of adapting to how kids would learn best. We definitely have a lot on our, our, our list of things to consider when planning forward for the future. There are definitely things that we would look at and moving as we go along. But I'm very proud of how hard everybody worked throughout distant learning. And the wifi access, I'll ask John to address.
Yeah, I can talk about that a little bit. So as an overall, is it echoing for other people or just me?
Can't hear you.
No echo, but you're kinda soft.
All right, how's that?
Better.
Okay. So the, the wifi access, as, as far as, as homes go, is going better. We still have a little bit of ways we can go. We've been talking at the state level with a couple of different people and engaging some other groups to look into some different options and see if we can get better service out to our families. That's probably one of the, one of the biggest obvious needs that we have right now. Pretty much everybody has some way of getting online, but those, those ways vary. There's, there's a decent number of people in town that have no option for cable service whatsoever and are limited to DSL. There's a group of people that are also limited to nothing but hotspots. And depending on where you live and the carrier, that can be very inconsistent. We've, we've really only had luck with a couple of the major providers and varying degrees of success with the other ones. So we're looking into that, different hotspots that we can get from known providers that do work well. We have, we have a couple feelers out there for those. We're looking at a couple of different wireless options. We're trying to engage, engage COCs at a higher level to see if we can persuade them to build out to some of the areas that really aren't a huge deal, but they've just been resisting doing. We're also looking into options at the local, like a co-op or municipal level for, for having networks, either fiber optic networks or wireless internet service provider networks that are maintained within town that could provide service at a much lower cost to both install and maintain than what COCs would ever charge. So we're, we're making some headway in that area and have a couple meetings over the next two weeks to see if we can, we can explore and then kinda come to a conclusion, which is the most beneficial for everybody and, and obviously involves the, the least amount of cost directly. Other than that, I, did you, did you wanna talk about anything else in there? Or do you want me to talk about some of the, more of the distance learning stuff? I should wait for that? Oh, I think you muted.
If I might, Chair, may I interject here? I would love for Jonathan to share just a snapshot of his vision for the high-tech classroom for next year, whether we're onsite or distance. Or both.
Definitely. And, and we learned a little bit today, I guess I'll start out with that. So the, I guess, there's a plan and that plan involves everybody coming back. And, and we are pretty hopeful for that, and obviously that makes, well, I shouldn't say that. From a technological perspective, that makes things simpler. So, so we, we will move in that direction. However, before any of that, we started planning a long time ago. So we made a couple assumptions and it's that no matter what situation we start the school year out with, is that we would end up in a situation, one way or another, where students will be in the classroom and a subset of those students will be learning remotely, whether that's for health-related reasons or personal, family-related ones, whatever that may be. We're also going to have a situation where we need some teachers or to give the ability to some teachers to teach remotely for similar health concerns or, or any other reasons. So we really kinda started developing a plan focused around that. We also took a lot of feedback from our teachers, a couple of the different grade level-based instructional teams. And we found three kinda main points that almost everything comes back to in distance learning. I would say ninety, ninety-five percent or more of the problems come back to either our fleet of Chromebooks, which a lot of the student devices, while still in, in good shape, are getting a little older. And then some of the, the more underpowered ones are having difficulty with it comes to multitasking, having, participating in a video call while trying to do other things. There's a lot of information being thrown out there, there's a lot of accounts, a lot of notifications, a lot of messages. And that can get confusing for people, knowing where to be at the right time, what to look for, what, what kind of information they need when, it, it definitely is a lot, and then we had both parents and students that were overwhelmed by that. And then the third one, and this is kinda something we figured out together, is that everybody wants more PD, they, they have definitely been asking for it. However, first, we need to sort out a couple things in order to make that PD truly effective. The biggest thing in there is, well, I'll, I'll say this, our focus for next year really is gonna involve a couple things. The, the shorter, quicker bullet points are adopting more cloud-based tools and a full single sign-on that will allow students to one-click access into most of the tools that they need. It'll allow teachers to link directly into assignments that won't require students to go through extra processes, open a certain app, enter username and a password every single time. We wanna automate a lot of the processes, the configurations, the provisioning of those services. So there's, there's not a signup process before a teacher can get started on day one. They don't have to organize all their students and, and create all the distribution lists that's already managed and happening based on our roster data. So we can take that completely off their plate. And then the third, and the biggest one revolves around the hardware. And that, that's kind of a, a multi-pronged approach, it involves updating our Chromebooks, which, which we have a bit of an aging fleet on the student side, but we also need to get the faculty devices upgraded. Right now, they're on, on older eleven-inch model Chromebooks that, more than anything, are, are, are just a hindrance to trying to work eight, ten-plus hours a day that they, that they are on them. So getting them hardware that will enable them to do things like see more of their students side by side while teaching a lesson will definitely benefit them a lot. And the physical side in the classrooms, it includes upgrading our interact, or upgrading upgrading or replacing, in, in the case of the smartboards, all of those interactive displays. That would probably include, based on our rough counts right now, 15 to 16 rooms that would get the addition of a display that don't have any and then some hardware to make them all compatible. What this all, as well as document and classroom type cameras. What this all does, and when we, when we design this ahead of time and, and try to implement it in this way, is it allows us to pick out products that all interact with each other natively. So they talk directly to each other and have ways of sending their video and audio and other content back and forth. So this means a teacher literally can walk into the room, into, into the future room here, their distance learning room, regardless of whether there are kids in front of them, no kids in front of them, 12 kids in front of them and three at home that are tapping in virtually. They can enter that room, tap a button to join the meeting. Though the, the camera or the, the remote visual solution will be able to, to display the, the front of the room if they need it to. But also turn around and go up to the interactive display where they'll be able to just start writing on the board, project wirelessly a screen, a video, a graph, whatever that happens to be, the content for the class directly from their device up to the board, mark it up in real time. All well, the students at home are simultaneously receiving of a streamed copy of this. So everything that's on their whiteboard in the front of the classroom is on the student's screen at home in front of their face as well. Everything that's said, spoken, every question that's asked by a student in the room can be heard by the kids at home and vice versa. If anybody has a question, they, they, they are free to chime in. Looking at a way for them to virtually raise their hand as well, maybe. But it really focuses on a natural extension of everything you would do in a classroom on a day-to-day basis, everything you can do that, that helps facilitate the learning process, those pieces that we're missing right now. It, it focuses on bringing those and, well, really eliminating those, I should say. All those little frustrations, the setups, the quirks, the time it really takes out of the day. Turning all that back around to the PD conversation. If we can refine the technology in the classrooms, the technology that people are using to the point where it's not an eight-step process to turn on every single class, and it's not a, a four-step process for each student, if we can get rid of all those and truly make it a, a one or two-click solution where everybody's now joined together. That allows us to use all that PD time and actually focus on content and lesson delivery and new ways to do that and, and exciting things. As it is right now, the mishmash of sorts that, that can happen, especially if we have co-curriculars traveling between rooms, in the case that students can't travel as much to, to bring down the spread of germs. It, it's, it's going to make a large difference. Just in the, in the everyday, if, obviously we don't know right now, but I wouldn't be surprised if it eliminates five to 10 minutes of, of almost every class that involves a teacher pushing into the room and having to get set up with the unique hardware and different adapters and all that. And, and that is kind of the brunt of it. It is a lot. Definitely, but, but it, it really is, is trying to eliminate the quirks, the frustrations. That, that, that's a big effort that we want to make over the summer and simplify it as much as possible. So the question of where do I go is now become something you have to research or what do I do? What do I click on at this time? It, it should be a very intuitive thing for everybody, allowing them to focus back on education.
Thank God you're doing it.
Fun job.
That's all I can say.
Fine, fine. Yes.
I'm doing a great job at it.
He will be creating the prototypical classroom for hybrid learning.
Pretty impressive. Again, all we do is sing this guy's praises every meeting, so I don't think we have to do it tonight, do we? Again, he's doing a wonderful job. Doing a great job. Thank you. Any questions for, for Jonathan? Oh, I wanted to say, anyone in, any attendees that are in the audience, there, there's a couple of ways that you can communicate, question and answer. You can throw a question in there and, and I've got a box here, I can read it and we can answer. And also in the chat. So if you want to, or you can raise your hand. So plenty of ways to contribute or, or make your voice heard today. Okay, the next thing is 5.3, Spanish transition update to Portsmouth High School with data and Wilbur Man's Spanish curriculum update. So before we get too much in the, in the, in the, in the Spanish weeds here, is Kelly Cole there?
Kelly Cole is here. We have to pull her in as a panelist. Jonathan, could you please pull Kelly Cole in as a panelist from the, she's in the waiting room.
There we go. Hi Kelly.
Hello, hello.
Hello, district teacher of the year.
Thank you.
So Kelly, I just have a, a basic question that I, I just want to get out first here, then I'll be quiet.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm oversimplifying this or not, but, so I, I would think that Portsmouth Middle School has a, a program, a Spanish program that is in line with Portsmouth High School. I would think that Portsmouth Middle School communicates with Portsmouth High School about Spanish. And, you know, you use the word curriculum or whatever, to say, hey, listen, these kids are coming over. We want to teach them this. This is how many hours we want to teach them, the days a week. This is when we want to start them, what year, third grade, fourth grade, all this stuff. And they have this all figured out, I would think, in Portsmouth or in any other town that has a high school, because we don't have a high school. I would imagine that they have a program that they're following that just gets these kids right into Spanish in high school and they're, and they hit the ground running. Am I correct in saying that or, or not?
I have met with the Portsmouth Middle School teachers, along with the Portsmouth High School teachers, many times. I can't speak to what is happening in the K through six world. We have never spoken about that before. It is primarily focused on seventh and eighth grade Spanish, moving into Spanish one and Spanish two. As for the curriculum, I do believe that they're using the Avance Semos curriculum, the one that we have now currently purchased. If you're speaking of more or less a scope and sequence, coincidentally, that's what I was going to talk about tonight, that we are going to be meeting this summer to create a scope and sequence so that my scope and sequence looks just like the Portsmouth Middle School scope and sequence. And then working with the Portsmouth High School teachers, that we can all sort of make sure that it is sequential and that all of the students are learning at the same pace. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I think, yeah.
I mean, I would just think logically that they, they would be prepping their students for what they're going to expect in high school. And that they would be on this feeder program, you know?
I think I can clarify that because the Chair and I had a, a conversation last week. And there was a time when Portsmouth Middle was not using the online dashboard. Is that correct, Ms. Mrs. Cole? The one that we're purchasing?
Right. I don't know what they were using in the past to be, it was either the N Español, which is what I was using, or it was the Avance Semos. But I don't know when they received that curriculum. I'm not sure, that online curriculum. I can't speak to a detail.
But we will also be purchasing that online curriculum that syncs up beautifully with Portsmouth High School.
Yeah, so we, we have currently purchased that Avance Semos curriculum, the one I was speaking of. We purchased 30 subscriptions for the Level 1A, which is for the seventh graders, and then we did 30 for the Level 1B. I have already received the teacher's additions for both of those and within 20 minutes of receiving it, I was, I was in it and I was learning all about it. It is going to take me the whole summer to learn that online curriculum. It is vast. It is different than what we have currently, but I am excited. I've been doing a little bit each night and can't wait to show it to our students. So like I said, this is, this is right in line with what the high school is using currently. So the scope and sequence when we meet come July, August, should be pretty seamless. And I do know that I spoke with Lynn Hogan over at the Portsmouth High School Foreign Language Ted. And she was very, very excited that we purchased this because now there's no question that the information that Spanish one students at the high school are receiving is going to be the same information that our students are receiving at Wilburn McMinn School. So I'm very excited about that. And thank you to, to everyone who has worked toward purchasing. I appreciate it.
Any other responses about Spanish before we move on? Any other questions?
Kelly, did you?
Did you want me to speak toward anything else?
I thought Polly Allen did want some information about academic attainment. You did share data with your administrators regarding the midterm?
Yes.
Eighty-five and above, 100% of the kids? And how about the final?
Yep, sure. So the middle school, excuse me, the midterm exam, I gave the exact same exam that was given at Portsmouth High School in the Spanish one classroom. I actually spoke with the teachers directly to make sure that I was using the same type of grading system, the same rubric. I graded it exactly the same way that they did. I am happy to say that overall, the midterm exams, the average was 83%. Very coincidentally, the Spanish one average at the high school was also 83%. So we are exactly on the same level in terms of the averages for the midterm exam. When I did, I did have a conference, a video conference with the whole department back in April. It was about three weeks into distance learning. I did share with them that typically I have the eighth graders three days a week. But because of the distance learning schedule, I was going to be seeing them one day per week. So obviously I wasn't going to be, I wasn't able to get in the content that I typically do in, in other years. So we talked about that and the, the majority of the teachers wanted me to review most of the material instead of teaching new information. So that is what I did. And I, I have a list here of everything that I went over with the students. And then we also decided to talk about the final exam and we, for me, I couldn't necessarily use the same final exam that I have used or that we always use because simply I didn't get to that content. So what I did was I created my own. It was a multiple choice final assessment. The students did remarkably well, but like I said, it was the same final exam that I typically give. And that the Portsmouth High School typically gives. I haven't spoken with Lynn or the department since. I don't know if they even gave, I, I'm not sure about the final exams or what happened with the final exam. We are going to talk, like I said, in July. As for recommendations, just to let you know, I recommended 14 students to attend Spanish two, six recommended for Spanish one. And then there are six others who did not see me in their eighth grade year, so they, they will be taking Spanish one as well. And Lynn was very happy with that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So now we're on to the superintendent report, 6.1, Report on State Assessments. Now, can you also, without creating a violation here, we talked about the news today too. Does this, does this sequence in with it, segue into it? Am I muted?
I can find a way, I can find a way to segue into it.
Okay, so Report on State Assessments and the news of today.
Well, as you all know, the U.S. Department of Education did approve Rhode Island's waiver for, in terms of administering RICAS 2020. However, there were, my phone is dinging, there were concessions that districts had to make. And that is, if we're not doing RICAS, we still have to administer an assessment. And if we didn't have an interim assessment, we had to grab a hold of one quickly and get some end-of-year data in terms of attainment towards learning standards K through eight in ELA and Math. Well, we were in good shape when I did get the survey from RIDE. I could easily fill it out. And note that iReady is our interim assessment product. We start benchmarking every year for the past several years in the fall, in, in September generally, we get some baseline data. And then we administer the interim assessment component two to three times or even more. We have students who need to be retested. And last week, all the parents of our students did get a lot of messaging around iReady. Last week was the iReady window and RIDE hasn't yet asked for the data. But I'm sure in some way, maybe a summary, they will be circling back to the district because they required us to administer it as if it were a state assessment. I'm sure they will circle back and ask for some sort of snapshot of our data. And where our kids were before distance learning and after. And Principal Whip and I have spoken, the kids maintained most of the ground. Testing maybe in the upper grade, you know, there's, there's a lot of online fatigue. I'm sure that entered into some of our teams and, you know, just their engagement in the assessment, end of the year, so on and so forth. I will hand it over to Principal Whip and she will give you a snapshot of our iReady assessments in literacy and math in place of 2020 RICAS. Go for it.
All right, thank you. I did, we're, we're not quite complete because there's still a handful of kids that are doing makeup assessments that didn't take it for one reason or the, another last week. The data is very similar to last year's, maybe a little bit lower. I would say that's a result of the, the change in instruction for the last 10 weeks of the school year. Also, it was a little bit challenging to set up an environment for, to take this type of an assessment virtually. Some of our, some of our struggling learners really need that quiet environment and set up with a, a carefully planned environment for test-taking. And that doesn't always exist in a home situation when you might have multiple people in the house. So, you know, there's a lot of reasons for some of the variation, but it was pretty similar to the past two years in both math and reading.
So, we have a question
Yep.
from Heather McCarthy. Will the iReady results be shared with parents? And if so, when and how?
What we are going to do is when we mail out the report cards, we're also going to mail out the end-of-year iReady composite, which we have done the past couple of years. We've sent it home with a report card. But because we're not in school, we will mail them. So they will go out the week after the last week of school. So when we go to school on a Friday, they'll be mailed the following Monday or Tuesday.
Perfect. And this is a great segue into today's announcement. Because, because after the announcement, the superintendents were on a call with the commissioner about an hour and a half or so before the one o'clock press conference. The commissioner and the Department of Education found out only today about this decision. You know, an expectation that full complement of students and, and teachers, to the degree that is possible, will open up schools in, on August 31st. So some superintendents asked, you know, how about next year? How about RICAS next year? Should we have another year where, you know, there's a waiver because our kids lost an entire term, a term and a half this year? And we're not quite sure if we'll be in and out of distance learning, onsite learning in the fall. And so those questions were not answered. And then the superintendents ran a second Zoom call in the afternoon with RIDE senior staff members, just the East Bay superintendent. They are meeting with small groups of superintendents. That question came up again. So this was a surprise announcement. That's why I pushed it out to families so they can start planning and be in sync with the executive order, the calendar issued by the governor, just in case they are planning vacations or celebrations. I wanted the entire school community to have that information. There's a lot to figure out. We'll be starting the week of the 22nd with our 20, 2020, 2021 school year planning committee. I received many inquiries from parents who would like to sit on that. So we have four parents who will be members of it. One is an infectious disease specialist, a PhD. And so we will be grappling with And so we will be grappling with interim assessments, getting kids ready for state assessments if they do happen. Here's the segue. And the process has to be completed by mid to end July, the planning process. So we have a lot of work ahead of us. The chair is on the committee and, or his designee. The committee will be one of the hardest working committees that Wilbur McMahon has ever seen. And I just want to thank everyone in advance for their cooperation because we'll be putting in a lot of human hours, definitely, to do the right thing for our community. And obviously heed the governor's executive order.
That's right. You better heed it.
Lori, let us know how we can help.
Thank you.
Oh, I mean, all superintendents, not you, Lori Daisman. All of them. So six two, international baccalaureate update. So Kelly Cole, you still with us?
I'm still here, yes.
And Lori, you're still with us, right?
Yeah, I can give a quick intro. I mean, we were, our work stream regarding the international baccalaureate process was rapid fire and just super productive and inclusive. That work stream was definitely disrupted by the pandemic. We had about a half dozen teachers who scheduled virtual and or lives. They were flying different places, flying all over the country. They were canceled. And so we have to sort of regroup this summer. We have an onsite training at the beginning of the school year. So we're going to roll in our IB planning, right into our task force or our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year planning team. We will roll in interim assessments, state assessments, international baccalaureate, all of it. But our work stream was going beautifully. And Kelly, you can, you're still muted. You definitely want to add to that.
Well, I guess, Mrs. Sonya, I just want to say, though, though it was interrupted, I have to say that we did have eight staff members that completed their international baccalaureate course while, they completed it online while we were in the online world. So I think we're actually in pretty good shape. We have about four people that we need to get caught up that missed. Is that about, does that sound about right, Mrs. Cole?
That's five, yep.
Okay. But I think we're in really great shape to move forward for the fall.
Absolutely, yes. We have thirteen teachers thus far who have taken a category one. We have five, like Lori mentioned, that still need to take that category one because unfortunately they were canceled. It does seem as though right now that all IB training, even if it's one in person, is still a go. You know, you can travel and they're still going to be having them. So our five should be trained by the end of the year. That is our goal, that we're going to have everyone trained by the end of twenty twenty. Like Lori said, on September sixth, we do have our liaison Nicole coming in from North Carolina. I have, I'm currently setting up her hotel stay, and we will be picking her up from the airport. She will be coming in for six hours worth of PD. So all fifteen or eighteen of us will see her in September. And we, Sonya and I were able to meet with her via Zoom. That was about maybe three weeks ago, a month ago, and she was very, very impressed with our progress. We are, we are right where we should be.
So Kelly and Lori, when your liaison comes for six hours, is there time for her to spend some time with some members of the school committee that day?
So she will be here for three days, but you know, the two KLM days are her travel days. But I can, if you don't mind, I can contact her and I can see what her schedule is and see what she's able to do.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, if we could talk to her, you know, wouldn't you say that was September? So I don't know, hopefully that'll be in person. If not, if not, I'd like to, I'd like to get a Zoom with her and the school committee and talk with her.
Yeah, Mr. McHugh, we could do that. She, I have her number right here. We can, we are in direct contact. So even if September sixth doesn't look good, we could always do something prior, maybe in August via Zoom. But she did offer it to us that she's available at any time.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. IB is moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Okay, we're on to the finance report. John McNamee.
Thank you, Patrick. So we're in the, completed the eleventh month. We've got one more month left to go. And I guess if there's any good that we can say about this pandemic, it's generating a surplus for us. We obviously had savings in the area of substitute teacher expenses because of the fact that we shut down two thirds through the year, as well as savings in the area of transportation costs as a result of shutting down two thirds through the year. So those are all reflected in the attached financials. So we are projecting that we should be somewhere around a surplus for this year of about $200,000 at this point. So we'll have, for example, this month, we'll have the large payment to the teachers for their, their summer pays. That'll be coming out, I believe, this Friday. So we'll have a good deal of the expenses in so that come July meeting, we should have a better handle on where we're going to wind up the year overall. But again, with the $200,000, that's also looking at some unbudgeted expenses. For example, we're, you know, the boiler cost us forty-eight five, so that number is also included in there at this point, so. But entertain any questions anybody might have on the report.
Yeah, is there, is there a update on the crack on the beam in the gym?
Yeah, we, I had the trust had sent an engineer in. We had contacted the trust, so I met with, with him at the school, the engineer. And clearly, it needs to be repaired. It's more of a priority when we have a snow load on the roof. Right now, it's not as big of an issue, but come the winter, he believes that it's got to be fixed. So we're just waiting for a proposal from the trust on what we, what we need to repair and how much the cost of that repair will be. I don't believe that the trust is going to cover it. I don't have an official denial letter at this point in time, but some of my conversations with the, the head of the underwriting at, the adjuster at the trust, indicated that they may be denying that claim, although I don't have anything official at this point in time.
So John, why would they, why would they consider denying that claim?
Well, it's, it's not a sudden event. So it's not like, you know, a hurricane or an earthquake that caused that damage. So, you know, it's, it could be attributed to the age of the building. You know, it may be the, the air conditioning, which changed the, the condition of the air in the building that may have caused that. But that probably would not be covered as a, under the policy at this point. But once we, once we have the denial, they'll, they'll have to specifically state why it's not covered under our, under our policy. It is, to some extent, it's, it's probably more cosmetic than it is structural, but everybody that looks at it says it needs to be repaired. So we just have to wait to see what they, what they say. I mean, we could always contest it, but let's see what they come up with in terms of their, their rationale for denying the claim.
Okay. Any other questions for John? Okay, thank you, John. Committee reports, Port Smith School Committee Liaison Report, Rita.
Right, we had a good meeting, in fact, last night. It was a review of graduation, which everyone was very pleased with. We had discussion about the budget, as we do here, and questioning how much funding we'll get from the state next year. I think everybody's pretty concerned about that. So quite a bit of discussion around the budget. And the other concerns were, oh, they had the Rhode Island Teacher of the Year for twenty twenty-one is Ashley Adamson, third grade teacher at Hathaway. Very exciting. We talked about going back into the buildings in the fall. Same issues, you know, what will that look like? Because I understand it, what is it, July eleventh, the plans are due to the, to the state? So that should be an interesting discussion. And then discussion around how to include racism and anti-racism into the curriculum, taking advantage of books, films, and they are forming a committee to look at the issues.
Thank you, Rita.
You're welcome.
John, just quickly, I know we don't get much federal funding, but what's the number at now?
Of federal funding?
Yep.
We probably get, with the REAP grant, we're probably somewhere north of a hundred thousand.
Okay, and we're expecting, are you expecting to realize that this year?
Well, the REAP grant, as explained during the budget process, was cut in half. So normally, we were getting somewhere around twenty-two, twenty-three. I think we had targeted to get about eleven. As far as the CRP, which is the grants from RIDE, Title I, Title II, IDEA and IDA preschool, I'm looking at at least similar amounts as we had FY twenty, maybe a little bit of an increase. And again, we should be seeing stimulus money. My understanding is that will be roughly about ninety percent of our Title I award, which this year was around fifty thousand. So we should be seeing something between, let's say, thirty-five and forty thousand for an, for federal stimulus money.
And how about the, the money that was just mentioned today by the governor? I think it was forty-six million dollars for COVID- nineteen. What is, what is that?
Well, I think they're looking to reimburse districts for expenditures relative to distance learning. I mean, a lot of districts needed to spend money to improve their technology, just as we did. In fact, I talked with the fire chief today in Little Compton, and he submits the FEMA and the REMA money. So I'm going to put together some invoices for cleaning supplies and other things that would be related to COVID to hopefully get some reimbursement on those, on those items. I'm not sure what the, if the forty-six million is going to be targeted by district, by some sort of an allocation at this point in time. But based on the governor's press conference, I haven't got any further details on it. It does appear that she's going to try to get monies to the districts, which basically would be coming out of that 1.2 billion that I think they received. And I think that's probably the forty-six million she's talking about is the allocation to the schools of that federal stimulus money.
John, what affects the federal, the federal money we get yearly? There's been some talk and some questions that we've got that if the beach doesn't make money, it affects, it affects our federal money coming in. Is there any truth to that?
I'm not too sure what, how that, how that's impacted on the town side. You know, clearly, some of the grants like Title I can be a little bit more based on the free and reduced percentage is probably a baseline that, that all districts will get as a percentage. But then those that have a much higher poverty level might get certainly a little bit more money on those grants. But I'm not, I'm not aware of anything relative to the, the federal monies coming into the beach.
All right, thank you. Eight point two, scholarship subcommittee report. I think we took care of that today. We all set with that? Good. Eight three, town recreation committee liaison report, nothing to report.
Yep.
Policy subcommittee report. Should we wait till we go head down to the bottom of the agenda?
Sure, whatever pleases you.
Thank you. Jana Wellness Subcommittee Report.
Yes, we met on Zoom last week, had a great meeting talking about mental and physical health of staff and children and all the unknowns going forward. And I have offered to Lori and Sonya my willingness to build a volunteer group to help them with meal delivery or whatever else they need going into September.
That's nice, thank you, Jana. No, discussion.
Also, Patrick.
Yes.
Patrick, sorry. You'll be interested to know that Jean Dunn gave an update on the weight and obesity statistics for our kids. And this year's report has us in the green area instead of the red area. So the moral of the story, according to Jean and Karen Witherell from the Rhode Island Coalition, is that we've got to look at this long term. We've got to look at, you know, over a three or four year span. So no worries on that regard.
Well, that's good news.
Yep.
Thank you. Nine one, discussion about high school request for proposal, RFP. So John McNamee? I think we disagree on this. Have you come around to agreeing with me yet?
Well, I think, yeah, I think the timing of getting this thing out is, is going to be the key. Now, with the governor's announcement today, most districts are going to be immersed in getting their plans together for the opening of schools. So I would say that, you know, we'll, we'll be able to get a draft together that the, the committee can look at and, and look at probably issuing the RFP sometime in the late fall after everything kind of has worked its way through the opening of school so that those districts then can kind of take a hard look at it. You know, they know where they're going in the FY twenty-one year before they look at taking on some additional student population.
Well, that's good. I think last time we spoke, the last meeting, you said maybe January, so we've got you to late fall, so we'll see what happens in July with what you said. So, thanks. Thank you for that. Any other, any other comments on that? Thanks. Nine two, discussion about grade eight graduation ceremonies at Wilbur McMahon School. This sounds like a one for you, superintendent.
Well, we have, you know, a diploma palooza. Not quite, not quite as spectacular as Portsmouth High because they had two hundred and seventeen graduates, but we have twenty-seven extraordinary eighth grade graduates. And so we will have our own version of a diploma palooza for them. And it has different stops. It definitely is within the guidelines for phase two. And do we have a graphic to put up? Did we get the graphic to? Sonya, did you get the graphic? Sonia, did you get the graphics to Mariah?
She looks to be in the document. Can you open that up, Mariah?
Thank you. Diploma palooza unveiled.
Sorry, Jonathan, do you think that you could make me a co-presenter so I can share?
I shared it with John. It's easier for him to share.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood that one. Wow. Well, I'm pulling it up. I did make Mariah a co-presenter, so whoever gets there first.
We did get the thumbs up from the PD. They're short-staffed, so we will have to pay for the details. And obviously, I gave you.
I got some good news on that, Mitchell, and we are not going to have to pay.
Ooh. Good. Okay, definitely, the surplus goes up. We're waiting.
One second, sorry about that.
I'll talk about the day before. So Tuesday, June 16th. And what we really want is if you could focus on the diagram at the top, please, if you could make that a little bigger. Tuesday, June 16th, there will be a video pushed out to families and students. That will be the award ceremony. It will also include the eight memories portion slideshow that they would normally have at the graduation program. So they will get those the night before. So that will be Tuesday, June 16th at 7:00 p.m. Those will be sent out to families. And then on Wednesday, June 17th, we're going to have our, our graduation, our diploma presentation, along with a graduation parade afterwards. The map you're looking at, this, we're the number one at the school driveway. So that's near the current main office, thank you. A car, a student's car will pull up there. The student will get out of the car. The, the family will drive to car to number two, which is the crosswalk in front of the middle school doors. The student is going to be walking to pop in circumstance along the blue walkway, which is the existing concrete walkway. So the, the students will be marching. Those little green dots that you see, those are, they're teachers appropriately socially distanced with masks that will be cheering on the students as they take the march. So that will be their audience. Number one is going, the first circle is going to be a, the circle on the left is going to be a floral arch where they'll stop and they'll have, they have a photo op there. Then the middle circle is going to be Mr. Tomaso at the podium with me handing them their diploma. So they'll get their diploma. And then they will stand on the middle school stairway and have their picture taken, holding their diploma. How the picture, how the, the families being able to take pictures is going to be at the number two mark. That square is going to be chalked off for the families. That's going to be the family box. So the parent who gets out of the car to take pictures has to remain within that area. So they'll be able to take pictures of their child as they proceed down the walkway. And then after they get their diploma, they're going to go to the driveway near the basketball courts and get back in the car. They will drive up to the top of the street and take a right. And the police detail will be, will be monitoring the stopping of the cars. So they'll wait in a line of cars until we get to the 27th student. And then as soon as all 27 students have gone through this process, we'll do three laps in the peak. There's also some special surprises that the graduates will be getting at the very end. But I'll tell you about those the meeting after graduation, so they don't hear about it in advance. But it, we're expecting it to take about an hour to an hour and a half. And everybody will be able, they'll be able to be highlighted individually. It's a, I think it's a compromise between everything, it being completely virtual to there being a virtual component and a live component. So the things like the sports awards that they would have got at the sports banquet, those will be part of the awards presentation video on Tuesday. But they'll get their, they'll get, so they'll get the traditional academic honors that they would get at graduation. But some of the other participation in sports awards, they'll also be getting when they pick up their goodies at the end of, at the end of the walk. We've had tons and tons of cooperation from organizations like LCEF, the PST, Garden Club, Upwood School Arts. So lots of people going to participate to help make it special. So I think it'll be a really great evening.
Wonderful. Any questions for the principal on that one? Great. I'm sure it'll be a great day, though. Next thing is public input 10. So like I said before, if you have public input, there's a question and answer and a chat. So you can jump in anytime.
There's currently no new public input.
What's that?
I was saying, no, no new public input.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so action items. 11.2 Consider Discuss and Go on a Contribution Little Compton Class of 2020 to Portsmouth High School via Roll Call. I would like to make a motion to contribute $1,000 to the Portsmouth High School class of 2020. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Rita Kenahan with a second. Any discussion?
For what purpose?
What was that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
For what purpose?
Lori Dias-Mitchell, would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, and the school committee in the past has donated to the after prom. And so this is just a more fitting way to set our 30 graduates at Portsmouth High. The festivities for their diploma palooza cost a lot of money. So what happened was some Little Compton parents of 12th graders reached out to me. And they asked if there was a way to purchase photo signs for all of the graduate, Little Compton graduates of Portsmouth High School. And so I said, well, I'll see what I can do. And they said, can, can you get access to the kids' yearbook pictures from the Portsmouth High School principal? So I contacted the principal, and he said, oh, gosh, Lori, we are, you know, what your parents and you want to get for the kids, we're already doing. Why don't you donate to our diploma? They didn't call it diploma palooza, I did. Why don't you, you know, you could take that money, you know, whether it's parent donations or whatever, and put it toward the diploma celebration that we're having? Because we're buying each of the kids a big sign for their yard with their photos. And so they invited me to a few diploma distribution meetings. And they, their houses were filled with balloons, and they had all sorts of schematics and to-do lists. And so I reached out to the parents, and I said, you are not to tell the kids this, but you do not have to buy them signs. There will be 217 signs at their diploma distribution. The entire campus is going to be decorated like a diploma wonderland. And it was. Carolyn was there as a parent. I had to swear Carolyn to secrecy, too. And so then the parents also wanted, Little Compton parents, they sort of backed off. They said, all right, they're already getting the signs at, at their diploma ceremony. How about some banners for our community? Because there are banners in all the different towns and cities. And our kids, you know, live in a town without a high school. Could we get banners? And I said, well, I'm out on that, but maybe the chair, you know, could put you in the right direction or whatever. And once again, they were going to raise some money and try to cobble, cobble enough money together for, I think they wanted three banners, one at West Main, one at Crandall, and one at the Commons. I think they've cut that down to two. So there's a history of the school committee donating to the senior class. This is an extraordinary series of events that, that have occurred in their senior year. And I think everyone's sort of doubling down on just how much these kids are celebrated and feted, because it's just not the same. We all had our high school graduations in person, and we had our yearbook parties, and we had our proms. We had our class trips, and they've had none of it. They haven't had their concerts and their culminating performances. They haven't had their games. They've lost out on a lot, and it's affected a lot of them emotionally. And so this would just be a really nice gesture, I guess. That's where the chair's coming from. He and I have been dealing with the Little Compton parents of seniors. And we are definitely caught up in there, in how wistful everyone's feeling for what a real graduation year is like. And can we assist Portsmouth High with those outstanding bills that, that our kids, you know, our kids are recognized with all these wonderful events and their pictures on signs. And, and then they want the town to celebrate them too, in Little Compton. So, yeah, we're caught up in it, I think, Patrick and I.
Thank you for that explanation. Any further discussion on it? I'll take a vote via roll call, please.
Polly Allen? Ed Bowen?
Aye.
Jana Porter?
Aye.
Rita Kenahan?
Aye.
Patrick McHugh?
Aye. Unanimous, no opposed, that passes, thank you. Okay, the first one is a, a transportation. Consider Discuss a Vote or Approve the Transportation Request for Proposal. So this is a, this is a second read? Am I reading that right? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, this was the.
I'm sorry, I'm too, I'm sorry, John, I'm too busy.
That goes back to the executive session, right?
I'm too busy looking at the policies, I'm one, one step ahead. Okay, Consider Discuss a Vote or Approve the Transportation Request for Poll, for Polls will be a Roll Call. Ever motion? Jen, I know you want to make this motion, Jana.
I do, I so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, it's Rita.
Rita, okay, discussion? John, you want to give us some discussion on this?
So the, we're in the fifth year of our transportation proposal. We issued an RFP with the help of a consultant we engaged through the HCP State Laboratory. That consisted of Portsmouth, Tilden, Bristol Warren, Barrington, and Little Compton. So the RFP was issued on February 29th, and responses were received on April 30th. Unfortunately, we only received the one response, but fortunately, it was from our current contractor, First Student. So we do, we do have a proposal that shows a pretty hefty increase at this point in time. We're looking at, the original proposal showed a 13.86% increase. And they had some alternative pricing, which would bring it down to 10.73 in year one, and 3% in years two and three. And that's the proposal that the consultant is recommending that we accept. There were some reasons for the increases. Apparently, in the East Bay, there's, there's a real shortage of drivers. So the cost of employing drivers has, has skyrocketed. We're also, the increases in minimum wage and other mandated fringe benefits for part-time and state mandated paid sick leave, all these have caused an increase, as well as they're making up for the lost overhead and profit by the closing of the schools in, in 1920 as a, as a result of the COVID. So based on that, those were the, the principal drivers for the increases. So at this point in time, I would recommend that we accept their proposal, the alternative one, which is about a 10.73% increase in year one, and 3% year two and three.
Folks, I've been talking, but I've been on mute, sorry. Mariah, can we get a vote via roll call?
Polly Allen? Ed Bowen?
Aye.
Jana Porter?
Aye.
Rita Kenahan?
Aye.
Patrick McHugh?
Aye. That passes unanimously, thank you. 11.4 Consider a Sco, a vote to amend the formation of policies. This is a second read. Ed Bowen?
Thank you, Pat. This was amended to reflect a number of things. One is that Sean Cluff astutely pointed out that we weren't fully compliant and that we didn't have copies at the school library or the town library. So that addresses that. It also allows school committee members to assess policy changes. And finally, and the reason that it came to us is that Mariah has been busy moving everything online into a program called Board Docs. So all the agendas and policies, et cetera, are on Board Docs on the school website. Board Docs required that the policy go in a certain order. And so this just established a numbering system for the policies. I believe that that is an accurate description of Board Docs, but if not, Mariah will please correct me. And so this is.
Any correction, Mariah?
You did an excellent job.
Okay, as usual, I will accept the motion to amend the formation of policies, policy. Do I have a motion?
I will move that.
I will second that. Any further discussion on that? And we will vote via roll call, Mariah, please.
Polly Allen?
Aye.
Ed Bowen?
Aye.
Jana Porter?
Aye.
Rita Kenahan?
Aye.
Patrick McHugh?
Aye. Motion passes. 11.5 Consider Discuss a Vote to amend the transfer of policies. This is a first read, so no vote. Add transfer policy?
I have to say that this is on the agenda, but we didn't actually take any action on it. We were going to amend it to include provisions for school lunches. But there is also, there's already an existing school lunch policy, so we didn't take any action on it. And it doesn't even need to be on here. I'm sorry about that.
Yes, I can clarify. Thank you, Ed. There's a food services account policy and an unpaid meal charges policy. And so we don't need to amend the transfer policy if we are following these other policies to the.
Thank you.
Especially the food services account of policy. So that's why we, we, which I just found last week. So we're good.
Thank you. Okay, we have another first read to discuss, to amend the standards of student behavior policy, Ed.
So this is putting us in line to get out the school handbook for this autumn. And it addresses changes that have been made in the school with respect to restorative practices. and, um, the student behavior expectations. So it changes that for the school handbook. I would ask, um, perhaps that, uh, Mrs. Whip is going to be able to, uh, far more knowledgeably and articulately, speak to the changes, uh, that are being made than I am.
I'm naming myself. Um, this past school year, all staff members went through restorative practices training. Um, one of our goals was to revise our discipline policy so that it was in line with the philosophy for sort of practices. Um, I mean, still have a discipline policy and it's still embedded within this policy, but it just-
Sonya has shared she has a very cranky internet connection, right, tonight?
Yeah, I can't hear.
It looks like your audio is cutting in and out.
Yeah, what she's saying is because we, 100% of our staff-
I'm sorry, I have a unstable all night.
There you go. Can you, if they can hear me, I can just give a quick summary for you, Sonya?
Yes, please.
I, I think I have a decent connection tonight. Um, so what Sonya is saying that this past year, uh, the teachers and the paraprofessionals were all certified in restorative practices, um, through the Youth Restoration Project here in Rhode Island. Julia Steine is very well known for that framework. And it allows for a holistic approach rather than a punitive approach and a tiered response to student, um, behaviors that are concerning. And so we needed to overhaul our very 20th century handbook. Um, the, the component around, um, student infractions and consequences and to bring it up to the 21st century framework that most districts are, uh, adopting. However, we also had to keep it in sync with RIDE's expectations around specificity when it comes to reporting student behavior. Uh, that is actionable, um, and the coding around all that. And so Sonya and her team, Mr. Ford, I believe, and Mrs. Miller, and a few other teachers did get together the past, uh, three weeks or so and hammer this, hammer away at it with a really good first read. And it definitely, uh, syncs up with RIDE's expectations as communicated to us, um, by our lawyers and syncs up with this new framework, the more progressive approach rather than to student discipline, but to whole school culture.
Thank you.
It's a home, it's a home run. It's a home run.
A home run.
Thank you, Lori.
Four bases, four bases. Any other discussion on that one? Not seeing any, thank you.
Good stuff.
11-7, uh, discuss school improvement team policy, Ed?
So this is, uh, one of many that will be coming over the next few months that will bring us in line with, uh, what the Rhode Island General Assembly has required of, uh, school departments, school committees, how they have realigned and redefined the roles for, uh, the administration, superintendents and principals, et cetera. One of these is the formation of a school improvement team. So, uh, this sets out the composition of the school improvement team and how that team, uh, will work representative. It is intended to have a representative, uh, composition in terms of the community. Um, and I am happy to take any questions that anybody might have about it.
So this comes about by the new statute that just came in in January that we are adopting Massachusetts, uh, educational processes. So we have a, now we have a sit team, we're going to put some people on it. So am I about right on that, Ed?
That's exactly right.
Yeah. So we'll see that again for a second read. If there's any questions about it now. Not seeing any, thank you. 11-8, discuss and vote to amend the human capital management. This is also a first read. Did you guys get to that one?
We did get to this one, uh, thanks to Carolyn. Um, efficient, uh, and knowledgeable as always. Um, this is, uh, because Carolyn is so efficient and knowledgeable and it really just involved minor changes to the, what we already had in place for HR. Uh, I don't know if Carolyn is with us, is she? If, uh, Carolyn is with us, um, she perhaps could speak to it, but this is just, um, screening procedures and institutes a two-step, uh, two-tier, rather, screening procedure, um, for, uh, hiring staff, I believe. Is that?
Yeah, um, Ed, this again just incorporates, um, all of the new, um, educational reform language into our existing human capital management system policy. A lot of other districts are naming it the staff hiring policy, but we'd already had such a great foundation laid with this policy that, um, it was an easy add. And, um, yeah, aside from a few minor tweaks that were discussed at the policy meeting this afternoon, uh, we should be ready to pass this as a second read next month.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this one? Not seeing any. 11-9, uh, discuss to adopt the principal compensation policy, Ed?
Uh, this is another in bringing us into conformity with the General Assembly's requirements. So, uh, as part of, uh, this new legislation, school committees will no longer directly hire principals, but superintendents will hire principals. And this outlines the procedures and parameters within which the superintendent will hire future principals.
Any questions for Ed on this one? Not seeing any. That's a first read. We'll see that one again next month.
I am sorry. That is as far as we got tonight. Um, so if I might, I would ask that we would put off 11.1, 11.11, 11.11, uh, to another meeting. We are not in a position to be able to have those on for a first read yet.
I will table 11-10 and 11-11 on your-
Actually, uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, in the, in the interest of, um, and I don't know if we have a copy, Mariah, but in the interest of, um, being, uh, expedient, the, the 11-11 is actually a simple one-page, um, edition. And I don't, if you would, uh, consider putting it up on the screen and we all can look at it as a school committee rather than have it go back to, I don't know that we would have any changes that we would, um, suggest to it on the subcommittee level. So-
We'll do. I'm, I'm going to table, I'm going to-
That one for a first read.
I'm going to table 11-10 and I'm going to jump to 11-11. And if something's going to come on the screen, is it there already?
If, I don't see it. I'm looking for the copy that is, oh, here it is.
Jonathan, if you could refresh Board Docs, I just put it up as public content on 11-11. If it doesn't pop up, I'll do it from my screen.
So it is, uh, pretty straightforward and really just reducing what is the present practice for the department and the school committee. Um, and it, uh, puts, uh, well, it keeps the onus of John McMe as far as being the business manager and the superintendent as far as being in charge of the budget.
One-page policy, it looks like.
Uh, yeah, less than a page. Three quarters of a page.
No, any discussion on this one? Not seeing any. We'll see that again for a second read in July.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. 11-12, consider discussing vote to approve any requests or information for administration and or legal counsel, anyone? Not seeing any. I'm going to take them, a, uh, consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, it's Rita.
And roll call, please, Mariah.
Polly Allen.
Hi.
Ed Bowen.
Hi.
Jana Porter.
Hi.
Rita Kenahan.
Hi.
And Patrick McQ.
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Bye, guys.
Yeah, good night, we'll see you back.
Miss seeing your smiling faces.